So if we can get started, I will reconvene the meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss some contractual issues and legal matter. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll just do introductions for everybody from the board. We have with us tonight Wendy Sampson, Meredith Moriarty, Will O'Beir, Chris Meyer, Jonathan Fishbein, Christine Beck, and myself Holly Dellenbaugh. And from the administration Jody Monroe, Dave Hurst, Judy Kehoe, and Kathy Johnston. First up on the agenda, approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the July 28th, 2020 board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next up on the agenda is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I first want to begin with a construction update. We're wrapping up so many things. The high school auditorium is in the final stages. The seating was delivered and is being installed now. And the auditorium will be completed by the start of school. The high school D122, that is complete and set for new furniture will be, it was just delivered, it'll be set up by the end of August. The high school pool is just about done and should be ready for the start of school. In the high school, the bathroom renovations are also being completed. The baseball field, the JV one, which still was being worked on, drainage has been installed. And sod and seed are expected in August. In the middle school, we have the nurse's office, which is completed as well. The upper gym, there was a new floor install. And bleachers and wall pads will be completed by August 21st. Also, the middle school, the middle school kitchen had some work and that'll be completed by the end of August. And the middle school pool had significant work done. And the wall tile is being completed, some of the filtration is being completed. That will still go into the beginning of September. So we expect that to be pretty much done toward the end of September. In Elsmere, we also have quite a bit of work going on. The restrooms and storage rooms should be available by August 17th. The main office still has some, some work being done. Has been a delay with some of the furniture, so that won't be done until September 3rd. And some other paving and things that are being completed and should be done by the end of this week. In Glenmont, they were having the kitchen renovation. Their flooring started August 10th. All kitchen equipment should be installed the week of August 17th, and that will be ready by the start of school. Slingerlands is having some restroom renovations done, and those will also be completed by the start of school. So overall, everything is anticipated to be completed, pretty much at the end of the summer, by the start of school. There will be some select projects that are ongoing, and that work will be done outside of the school day. So that's kind of where we are in the process. We did get some new pictures that we'll be sharing out as well. Another thing that I wanted to just bring up is we have had in the past a pretty significant travel program. And this year, we were slated to go to Japan in February. And we had also moved a trip from last spring that was supposed to be going to Peru. We had moved it to this coming or next April. So I think what we're going to do, if we cancel the Japan trip by September 1st, families won't lose any money. And I think with the uncertainty of where things are, it makes sense to do that. Students could still opt to take a trip in the coming years, but I'm not sure that Japan is going to happen. So if we let every, the EF tours know by September 1st and families, they won't lose anything. And then we'll have to consider, in the spring, we have the trip to Peru that's scheduled, and we have a lab school trip to Boston. So we have a little time to figure out, both of those were already rescheduled. So I just wanted to let the board know where the travel is. And then I would like to ask Dave Hurst to provide an update on, we have made some changes. We sent something out today, but I want to make sure everyone is aware of the K5 remote learning model. I know we've had some inquiries about that in order to, for parents to make the choice that they want for their children. So I'm going to ask Dave just to speak about what that model is looking like. It's still a little bit of work in progress, but we think we have a pretty good idea of what that will look like. So I'll turn it over to Dave for right now.
Okay, thank you. So before I start with the model, I just want to provide sort of an update on where we are in terms of numbers, just so people can get an appreciation for, you know, why the plan is kind of moving in the direction that it is. To date, about 6% of our families have opted for their students to be remote, which is about 270 students. At the elementary level, it's, it's spread out almost perfectly equally, right? So for, for each grade level at each building, the average is about five students. So no one building stands out as an outlier really. No particular grade level stands out as an outlier. You know, the average is right around five for each grade level at each building. At the secondary level, we only have one building, middle, high school, but about 20 students per grade level to date. But that, with that being said, that did allow us, we do have some flexibility now in looking at the way we are scheduling. Initially, so every, just to be clear, every student is currently assigned to a teacher within an elementary building. So those that chose remote learning, initially, they were assigned to a built, to a teacher within their building. And what that means is, I know there was a lot of concern about returning back to the building, should they choose to go from remote back to onsite. And, you know, while the, the potential does remain that should for safety reasons, we'd not be able to place students back in their home building. Initially, it looks like that should not present itself as a challenge. But I just want to caution people though, that, that potential always does exist. But currently, it should not play out that way should students return, choose to return to their home buildings at some point. We, we have looked closer at the numbers, and we do feel like we have some flexibility with some of our staffing. And that we'll be able to offer a model that falls somewhere between sort of the Model 1 that we proposed and Model 2. Initially, what that's going to look like is we're going to be grouping all of the students from each of the buildings at a particular grade level. So say, you know, all of the second graders from our five buildings, which, you know, is about 20 students, say, would be grouped together as a cohort, and they'd be working with a district teacher throughout the day. And it'd be a combination of live instruction and some independent work, not unlike what you'd have if you were onsite, right? You're going to have some live instruction and some independent work. Right now, the plan looks like we're leaning towards, from one particular teacher, you'd be getting your reading, writing, and math instruction. And then we would utilize some other teachers that have specialties in social studies and science to help offset. And also chip in, where that might not be on an everyday basis, it might be, you know, three days of social studies and two days of science one week, and that could flip. Again, a lot of this is still pending on final numbers. But we do feel that, you know, we can offer for grades K2, two to two and a half hours of live instruction each day with a teacher, again, within that cohort model. And then grades three through five, more like two and a half to three hours of live instruction with a teacher, or multiple teachers throughout the day. So that's sort of falls in between what we had originally proposed of Model 1, where kids would only be really checking in once a day with a teacher, and the rest would be utilizing pre-recorded videos. And, you know, the, the Model 2, which was really, you know, that model was developed should the whole district go to virtual. But if our numbers had been high enough, we could have pulled a model up very similar to that for the remote students. So we're somewhere in the middle. All students are going to have access to a teacher. All students are going to have access to live instruction throughout the day in the core areas. Right now, it looks like the special areas would be more of an asynchronous model. But again, we're still looking at options to try to alleviate some of that as well. But the, the one thing I guess that is, I definitely want to be clear about is that, you know, all second graders across the district would be bundled together in a cohort, and they'd be working with the same teacher. So you, they would not be following the same model that our six through 12 students are, where they're sort of live streaming into a classroom. And again, a couple of reasons for that, that, that model really is not appropriate for K5. This, this model is much better where students are with the same group of students throughout the experience. The teacher can provide more individualized attention. They're not trying to deal with younger students in front of them and deal with technology and students at home. The other difference is obviously all of our secondary outside of sixth grade, those students are in every other day anyways. So half the class is already virtual. So adding a couple of more students to a section that are virtual every day is, you're not really changing what that classroom teacher is doing, because they're always going to have remote students. So we do feel this is a much better model than students trying to livestream into an elementary classroom, two students here, two students there, keeping them all together with the same teacher. They can keep, you know, a, a better track of their virtual learning experience, which is a different experience. We feel will provide a much, much better model.
Thanks, Dave. And one, one other point just to make is that I've had several parents ask at start, in an onsite model, can we transition to remote? Yes, you can, obviously. There's not a huge impact to us. The, the only potential would be if a large number of people wanted to then switch to remote, we might have to make some adjustments in our staffing, but it wouldn't, you know, there's not the health and safety concerns that wouldn't start coming back onsite that we have to consider. So that is a possibility. And then my last thing, I just wanted to thank a lot of people. This has been a challenging time. This is our last board meeting before school will be open. And we've had a lot of people really working on our remote, you know, our, our opening plans, our, our BCTA, our BCUEA, our administrators, parents. And everyone has been just tremendous in supporting and trying to help us kind of work through this. So I just wanted to thank everyone for all the time. And I know we still have a lot of work to do before we open, but I really want to just say thank you to everyone who has put a lot of time and effort into really creating a safe opening and hopefully meets the needs of all of our students and families and staff. So that's my superintendent's report for tonight.
Thanks, Jody.
Jody, Jody, excuse me, I have a question about the travel, if I may.
Sure.
The, I don't remember anything being said about, for example, nature's classroom or the, for example, the lab school opening and closing trips and other ancillary trips. And I was wondering if you could address those.
Sure, so for the fall, basically what we've said is obviously no field trips to begin the year. We kind of have to wait and see where things are in planning for the spring. I mean, obviously, local trips require less time and planning and less costs involved. So we're hoping that by the spring, we'll be able to do some of those. But we did agree that field trips in the fall, things like nature's classroom, the lab school trip, was not something that we could provide.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to thank you guys for looking at the remote option at the elementary, just because there was a lot of feedback from us about, parents about getting more direct instruction from teachers. And the fact that we now have this new plan, I think is going to answer and help a lot of parents making the decision. So, so thank you for all the work you put in in making those plans.
Sure.
Any other questions for Dave or Jody?
Is this the, the appropriate time to just ask any questions about the reopening plan? Are we going to be discussing it more later?
No, I don't have a plan to discuss it later. So if you have questions about reopening, I'm happy to answer them now.
Sure, okay. One thing I've seen a lot of parents asking about, and I know we've talked about it in Q and As, but perhaps we could just clarify it, because I know it's a big concern, is what to do if your child has a runny nose? And, you know, like, are we sending those children to school? Are they going to be sent home? How long do they have to stay home? Do they have to get a doctor's note? That kind of thing, if you could just clarify that.
Sure, we just had a, a meeting with our school physician, because, you know, if you get into cold flu season, obviously, those symptoms become more prevalent. So basically, you know, there are children who have a lot of allergies, or they tend to get colds and things. And so basically, the guidance is, and in our tracking, is if these are new symptoms or something kind of unusual, and we would recommend they contact their pediatrician, or they could contact the school nurse to get some advice from them. And then depending upon the circumstances, the school nurse, for example, the pediatrician might say, come on in. And then it's up to their, their health provider if they think it warrants, you know, further testing or requires the student to be out longer. So I think that it's really going to be dependent upon the situation. I think one thing that we've reiterated with parents is that if your child does have kind of chronic condition, to please, if their school nurses don't know that, to let them know about that so that they can respond appropriately. Because obviously, we don't want to have kids out of school unnecessarily. We also want to be, you know, cognizant that we need to be mindful of potential symptoms that are similar between the cold and flu and COVID, so trying to separate those out. So the school nurse or the pediatrician are probably the best resources to help people understand, you know, what the, where they should go next.
Okay, great. And regarding remote learning for K through 5, one thing that I really struggled with this spring with remote learning with young children was the lack of physical resources, like proper writing paper for Kindergarteners Day, the kind of the wide lines, and worksheets and physical books. Now, I know that those, you know, we were, we could print those off of, of the website, but not everyone has the ability to print. And I, that also, you know, takes up a lot of your paper and ink and everything. Do we have a way to get those things that young children need into their hands? And especially, and even for older children, the books. You know, obviously, the spring was a hard time because the public library was closed too. But do, do we have a plan to get physical books to kids if they're fully remote?
Yes, so we can, I think this spring was a very different and unique circumstance, for sure. But if we have materials and supplies that particularly the teachers who are teaching remote want those children to have, or they need books, we can certainly get those to them. We kind of have worked through some of that process, but that's not an issue either. Parents can pick them up, or we could deliver them on, you know, a bus route or something like that. So that's not a problem.
Great. And then, speaking of buses, I think there is, some people were a little confused about the transportation survey that went out and whether or not, is a child always going to have a seat on a bus? If, say, they said, I don't need your transportation, I'm going to, you know, drive my kid most days, but one day they do need a bus, are they going to have a seat on that bus? And ancillary to that, are we changing our routing based on the results of that transportation survey? If it seems like from one school, a lot of kids are going to be providing their own transportation, but in another school, we're going to be having to be busing most of those kids? Are we moving some of our routes from school A to school B?
I wouldn't say we're moving some of our routes. So that transportation survey was really to get an idea of the number of people who would want transportation. So to give us that idea, we didn't ask people to personally commit if they were eligible. So obviously, when we get the results of students who are going to do remote learning, then we obviously wouldn't be transporting those students, at least for the first, you know, 10 weeks of school. But we always, after the beginning of the school year, need to make adjustments with our routing anyhow, so that would be similar. But any student who is eligible for transportation and needs it, we would be able to provide it. You know, the, what I could say is that if a parent is, say, they start the year and they don't want transportation, but eventually they do, that when they know they're going to need it, the more advanced notice they could give transportation would be helpful for planning purposes. But if a child needs transportation, they're eligible, we would make sure that they would get that.
Okay, great. And something I saw on the Q and A, or frequently asked questions that you published today, was regarding children who have a medical condition that prevents them from wearing a mask. Are we providing information to the rest of the families in that classroom that there's going to be a child that is not wearing a mask? Because I know a lot of people are concerned if we think everybody's wearing a mask, and it turns out there's one child who's not wearing a mask.
We would not be contacting families about an individual child because of obviously confidentiality. And what we do require if there's a medical condition child who can't wear a mask, and we have a couple in our ESY program, we verify that there is a legitimate medical condition through our school physician, obviously, working with their child's pediatrician to make sure that there's no option. Sometimes an option could be, perhaps the child can't wear a face mask, but can wear a face shield. And then the recommendation is if a child can't wear a face cloth, that you make sure there's social distancing for that child with other peers and things. You can have some bear, plexiglass barriers. But in regards to notifying families, if a child can't wear a mask, we could not do that because of student privacy.
I mean, obviously, I understand student privacy, I wouldn't be asking, you know, to name names. But if there was a child in, in my child's classroom who wasn't wearing a mask, that may, you know, change my opinion about whether or not I even want my child in that classroom.
I'd have to check if we do that or not. I'm not certain that we could.
I don't think you could, Jody, because it would be an identifier regardless.
Exactly.
You would not be able, it's, it's like, there's a kid in the class who has, well, I don't know. Well, you know what? Meredith, if somebody has lice, we send out a notice, but it's different. It's not a disability.
Yeah, I think that there's, this is a medical condition, so you get into other sorts of issues with that.
I'm not sure that, that someone's medical condition is, is going to negate my right as a parent to know that my child could be in jeopardy because of some other kid's medical condition. It's, it's like saying that, you know, my right of, of, my right of free, of, of freedom of religious expression, for example, ends at the point it impinges on someone else's right of expression. So for the same reason here, I think that if, if I'm a parent and I have a child who is wearing a mask and is doing all the things they need to do to stay safe, and suddenly I'm confronted with a child that is not wearing a mask, for whatever reason, disability or other, I think that that child is putting my, potentially putting my child in danger. And I think that's the point at which there has to be a serious discussion about notifying the parents that there is a child without a mask and giving them other options.
But Jonathan, you could also have a kid who has severe behavioral issues in a class. I mean, we have co-talk classrooms, so we're not informing parents that there's behavioral issues with certain children, because again, it's an identifier. They, they can ask their kids when they get home, is there anybody in your class that doesn't wear a mask? I mean, they can do that, but we as a school cannot, by doing that, breach their, their confidentiality.
I, I think that that's right. I can, I can certainly break with our attorneys or with our school physician as well. I can tell you, and speaking with our school physician, there are very few reasons why people wear a mask. You know, there's very few conditions that, so I don't expect that will be many children who you'll find cannot tolerate a mask. I think it's going to be a rare exception, to be honest with you, based on my conversations with them.
Jody, is it our physician that makes that determination, or is it theirs? Because I know from experience that there are physicians, unfortunately, that will write almost anything.
So the, the child's pediatrician would have to document what the condition is and, you know, why. And then our school physician would review it and make the final determination.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jody. I just, if you could please, you know, speak to our attorneys and physician regarding notification of other parents, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I'll do that.
Meredith, you all set? Okay, just another question. I've been talking to teachers, really at the elementary level, and they've been talking about how they want to take their kids outside as much as possible, even do teaching outside. Where are we in terms of providing resources to teachers so they can facilitate a class outside?
So we are purchasing some tents for outdoor space, which so they'll at least have a covered location. And the principals are going to work with the teachers on other locations outside that would be appropriate. At the secondary level, we actually do have some outside areas with Wi-Fi accessibility. So in the, at the elementary level, obviously, those kids are littler, younger. They talked about bringing, you know, having kids bring a towel or something that they can just sit on outside. That, you know, they sit on the floor all the time, so it's an easy transition to get kids in and out of the building. So we absolutely will work with the teachers on different spaces that would be a good location for outside, outside, you know, bricks or lessons or activities. So that's definitely something we're encouraging.
Any other questions?
I have just one more, if no one else does. Regarding the middle school, Mr. Klugman sent out a video today. And one of the things he mentioned was that, and forgive me if I didn't quite understand this, that at lunchtime, the middle schoolers would bring their Chromebooks to lunch. What, what is the reasoning behind that?
Well, they don't really have any other place to keep them, because when they go to lunch, they're traveling, and they're not able to use their locker, so they would have them in their backpack, would be my guess. So they would bring whatever supplies they had after lunch, they're going to whatever their next class is, so.
The video made it sound like they would be using their Chromebooks at lunchtime.
I don't think they'll be using their.
Okay, maybe, maybe I misunderstood that then. That's what I wanted to clarify, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
And, and Jody, I knew there was a couple people who had inquired about hybrid being able to do some remote and some in-person. Can you just explain why that wouldn't be an option?
Sure, one is that we have to make sure that we're accounting for, you know, the kids who are onsite, making sure that we have capacity in all the classrooms. So allowing students to say, I'm going to come in for this particular class, but not for others. One definitely creates a, a safety issue in being able to make sure that we can have those, in those classes. And it also presents an issue with, I'm, I'm sure everyone heard the gunner talking about, you know, contact tracing and making sure we're able to follow where kids are during the day when they're in our building. So having kids come in and out of the building just doesn't work for that piece of it. The other piece that it could create is if we allow that, we potentially get into a transportation issue where we're having to give students access to transportation then for a particular class, and we just don't have the ability to do that.
And the only other question I have, which is kind of complex, and I don't even think you're going to have an answer, is if somebody were to contract COVID in a classroom, I'll just use the middle school as an example, eighth grade, P1.
Do we know what the standards are? Does, is it only that classroom that's going to be quarantined? Does the school shut down? Do we already know what that process looks like should somebody come down with COVID? One student in a classroom?
So we know what the process, the initial process would look like. So if a student or staff member tested positive for COVID, then we would be working with the Department of Health. And our, I guess, our role in that is to help the Department of Health identify, who did that person come in contact with during the school day? Is it, were they only in the classroom for one period, two periods? Did they come, did they go, you know, did they enter in the main hallway? Did they take the bus? And then the Department of Health basically takes, would tell us we have to shut down for a day in order for the Department of Health to figure out who that individual, and it's real close contact. It's not just contact. So they would determine who was in close contact with that person and potentially is at risk. And then the Department of Health would tell us if the building had to be shut down, if individuals in a, in a classroom had to be quarantined for a certain amount of time. So once that happens, we really take our lead from the Department of Health on what, what we would have to do as a school district. You know, last spring, when this was first starting, it was, you know, your whole district is shut down. And that, in speaking with the Department of Health, that likely would not happen again. It would be case by case in who did that person come in close contact with, that potentially they are more at risk, and they would make those assessments, so.
So you wouldn't anticipate a building, a building wouldn't, you wouldn't anticipate a building closing for 24 hours? If we, or you would?
It might, and it might be closed for 24. They might say, you know, keep everyone home for 24 hours until we can get a good handle on, who did this person really come in close contact with? And then they would let us know from there, do we have to remain closed? Or do just certain individuals have to stay at home for a period of time?
And would we go remote for that 24 hours?
Yep, we would do, we would go remote for that time period.
Okay. Thank you.
One, one more question, sorry. There was that photo last week from the hallway in Georgia of all those kids. What are we doing, you know, when, I'm sure we can have arrows and all kinds of stuff, but what are we doing literally in terms of like talking to the kids and training the kids? Because, you know, in first grade, you can have a line leader, and that works, but like telling a 15-year-old they're going to have a line leader, I don't know how that's going to fly. So what are we going to do, or how are we going to talk to 15 and 16-year-olds about making sure that these things actually happen in the morning?
Right, so one of the things that I know the middle and high school are both doing are, they're going to do some, you know, messages to parents and kids to kind of do, and show images of hallways, classrooms, to give them a sense of what does this look like? One of the reasons that we decided to start the first few days in a remote model was exactly for that reason, that we could have discussions, our teachers could have discussions with kids about social distancing, about walking in the hallways appropriately, wearing masks, so that when the kids actually do come on site, they have some kind of preparation for what the expectations are. It's not just everyone, you know, funnels into the building in a large mask the first, in the first day through the doors. So we, that's, we felt like having those days virtual and be able to really spend some time talking to the kids, answering their questions that they might have about things that maybe we haven't even thought about, would be a good way to kind of prepare them for showing up on site the following week.
Okay, thank you. Just because, you know, I mean, once they're settled in a class, I think that social distancing is something that we can, you know, achieve with some success. But it's just those periods particularly of entering the school and leaving the school that I have concern about of, particularly if you're a teenager, you're just going to put in your, your AirPods and just, you know, and how do we make sure that we keep those kids safe?
Sure. I just wanted one more question on the clarification of what's going to happen if you're sending your child at the high school level, you're sending the child in for, you know, every other day. What does it look like when that kid is at home? Is that instruction, you know, are they zooming in? Are they, you know, are they getting what every other kid in the, who is in the class is getting? Or do teachers still have, do teachers have an option to do other stuff with that half of the class?
So the students have to, have to sign into class at the beginning of class. The student, the teacher will take attendance at that time. But then depending, the, the student could just stay online and participate in a class discussion for the 40 minutes of class. The teacher may have a plan where they're doing something where during the days, the, the eighth day where the students are remote, they're following up on an activity. They may have started on site in class, so the teacher may do a quick introduction, do a, you know, a review. And the students at home might be working on that activity independently while the teacher's working with the other group of students. It really is going to depend on the class itself, the content area is appropriate, or even the activity if they're doing, let's say, a class is working on a research paper. The teacher may be conferencing with kids when they're there or virtually. And while the students are at home, they may be working on their written piece of the research paper. So teachers will have discretion, I mean, similar to what they do in, when they're in classes now. Every teacher has some different styles, but the expectation is the students have to log on, they have to check in, you know, make sure they know what they have to do. And then the teacher, depending on the activity, would determine if those students are staying on for the entire period of doing a different activity or a follow-up activity from, you know, the lesson previously.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Hey, I don't have a question about the remote or the reopening plan exactly, although I want to thank Dave and the K5 administrators for putting so much work into the curriculum, the remote curriculum plan. I know I was sort of a nudge about it, and I appreciate all the work that went in. I did have a question, and two weeks ago, I was able to participate in two focus groups, one on sexual harassment and one on racial equity in the district, both of which were very robust discussions. I expected them to be. I was a little taken aback, obviously, with some of the personal stories. I found them to be rather horrifying. So I wanted to follow up to see, now that we've hosted a couple of those, kind of what the next steps were, what we were going to do with, with the feedback that we got, because it was, I, I knew we had a lot of work to do, but it was rather disturbing.
So we are going to be kind of putting together a summary of some of those discussions. To be honest with you, we haven't been able to, because we've just been so focused on our reopening plans. Also do have a small group of people who are working on sexual harassment from a curricular standpoint, as well as putting another group working on some diversity. And our goal is to kind of figure out a way to move forward and engage some students and community members in further discussions. So we would probably look to expand that. I know some students have expressed interest in being part of some kind of a, you know, subcommittee or group moving forward. I know there's some high school teachers who, I don't know if they sent it out yet, but offered to have kind of a, I don't know if it's weekly or bi-weekly, a Zoom call with current students and former students to have continued discussions about race and diversity particularly. So we are going to continue those efforts, but we do want to compile what said is part of, you know, the summary of things. And then we'll come up with kind of more of an outreach plan.
Dave, along those same lines, I know that earlier in the summer, you had said that, I think the English department was looking, school was looking at the curriculum with respect to some of the issues that had come up. I'm not sure if you have any update on that, or if it's still in progress.
Yeah, so English, actually, English and social studies are doing quite a bit of work, K-12, in looking at curriculum and diversifying curriculum. And at the September board meeting, I, I should have an update from Andy Baker and Nick Petricioni. They're kind of compiling all of that now, because some of the summer curriculum work is still ongoing. But in September, I will have an update on to where we are.
Great, thank you. And this leads into the, our, the board report. One of the things I was going to bring up was that I also participated in the focus groups. And I was, they seemed like they were, they were productive and a good starting point for us to really, you know, continue, you know, a deep dive into these issues and to make the changes that we need to make. One of the issues that came up on one of the focus groups that, that I listened to was about our calendar in particular, and whether we would want to consider changing Columbus Day to either Indigenous Peoples' Day or, you know, hyphenating it with Columbus Day. And it is apparently a more complicated issue than just making a quick change. So, but it is something that, you know, I spoke with Jody about looking at for, possibly for next year's calendar. And it may be a question of just, instead of referring to specific holidays, just referring to holiday. But some of the, some of the pieces of it, I guess, it, it brings in our, some of our, our contracts with our bargaining units and some, you know, federal and state legal issues that we have to take a look at with respect to just changing a name. But I wanted to mention that that was one thing that did come up on one of the groups that, that I was on. I also wanted to mention that I, I listened in to all the parent forums on the school reopening that took place. And I, I just wanted to thank all of you guys for putting those together, because I, I felt like they were really productive. And I wanted to give a special thank you to Joellen for the work that she did moderating those, because she really did a great job kind of getting everybody who had questions, and there were a lot of questions on all of them to be heard. So, Joellen, I want to make sure that you know that we really appreciated the work that you did on those. I, I, did the facilities committee meet since our last meeting? I kind of lost track, but I didn't know if, since our last meeting, there was a facilities meeting?
Yes, there was.
Jonathan, would you or Christine or Wendy like to report out on that?
Sure. Basically, the, there was a request, the, the biggest request and the concerns that, that were most of the discussion around, was around, was upgrading the recording, creating a recording ability in the auditorium and upgrading it from a standard recorder to an HD recording. And it's about, in total, it's about, if I understand correctly, it's about a $46,000 ad. But we do have the money if, if, in the contingents, not the contingency, the, what is it, Jody, the other, the other fund?
That's correct, there's allowance.
That's, yeah, contingency.
Okay.
So just to add on to that, Jonathan, it just, the original purchase had HD cameras, but not HD recording equipment. And so it was determined that to make best use of the HD cameras that were purchased in the initial bid, that we should upgrade to the HD recording. And so that's where we thought that, since we're investing such large sums of money into the auditorium, we don't want it to be outdated before it's finalized.
We, we should be clear that, that despite the recording ability, we're not going to be giving recordings of performances out, because that would violate the rights that we buy when we buy a right to produce a show. We don't buy the rights to record and distribute the show.
Some shows allow it, Jonathan. It depends on the show and what their, their contract states. But some shows do allow for that, just like Disney and, and the high-end productions probably usually don't.
Thanks. That was all I had. If any other board members have anything they'd like to report out on? Chris, you?
Sure. Just really quickly, I would just like to say thank you to all of our teachers in the district that are entering this, this brave new world. And I know how much work they are all putting in to get us to this point. But there's a specific group that I want to thank, the elementary school teachers in particular. Elementary school is about, you know, working in close quarters with people, using manipulatives, you know, you know, and, and this COVID experience is, you know, the exact opposite. So I, I can't even imagine what elementary school teachers going through right now to create a curriculum where they can have meaningful learning experiences, but also keep kids six feet apart. So I just, I just want to thank them, because I, 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 I know how hard they must be working to make all of these things possible, and I really appreciate all of their efforts.
I also participated in, in the, or listened to the parent forums and one of the equity forums. I want to thank everyone that put those together. I also had, have had, walking around my neighborhood, numerous conversations with parents mostly that are attending Hammagrove because of where I live and walk. But I have to say that universally, they have been very appreciative of all the work and the detail that have gone into the plans. And on their behalf, I also want to thank Jody and Dave and everyone else that had a hand in it.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the next thing on our agenda, which is our presentation this evening from Judy Kehoe on our 2020, 2021 tax rates.
Thank you. Can everybody see that screen now? So late this afternoon, literally, we have the hot off the press numbers for the end of our 2019 to 20 fiscal year. And when we had last presented this information in May at our public hearing, we thought that we would have a surplus of about $4 million based on not having our full operations in place, being able to generate some savings. And as we've gone through the closeout process, we're happy to report that that number is even larger now. We're looking at about a $5.3 million surplus. And as we're going into a heightened period of fiscal uncertainty over a longer-term period, we know that we'll be able to use those resources for the benefit of the district and to try to bring some longer-term stability in the district's finances. So you recall that when we adopted the budget, we also made the decision that knowing we were going to have a surplus, we were going to earmark $3 million of that as our offset to the anticipated state aid reductions. We still do not have information from the state about the magnitude of those reductions, but at least we're feeling better prepared for whatever that ultimate number will be. I did want to just briefly touch on the CARES Act funding, because I feel like there might be some confusion about what that entails. When the final governor's aid runs were released to us, there was a reduction, it was called a pandemic adjustment, and it was a reduction of about $150,000 off of our state aid totals. And what the governor's proposal included was an allocation of federal aid to offset that loss. So we're not getting any additional money. It really was just a swapping out of the state. It really was just a swapping out of the state share of that funding with the federal dollars. A giant shout out to Dave Hurst because he has actually been doing a lot of the legwork on submitting that application into New York State. A component of that application is getting the sign-off from our private parochial schools as to their allotment of the monies. It's actually two separate federal programs, and it does require an apportionment of aid to the schools. Also, breaking news today, where that was originally due to be submitted by this Friday, had an August 15th due date, that was just announced that that has been extended to August 31st, coincidentally, the same day as our SFA filings are due. So, we are working to put that all together to make sure that we are continuing to be made as whole as possible with our state aid monies. So, from the meeting in May, there are several changes on this projected fund balance numbers. The first thing that I wanted to flag for you are our encumbrances. We had estimated this would be around $250,000, and in fact, the actual number is just above $92,000. And what this represents are orders that have been placed as of June 30th using the 2019, 20 budget monies, but that just won't be received until the following year. So, this will be an automatic increase to next year's budget, which is why it's a carve-out on our fund balance components. The other piece that has changed since May is based on having additional surplus monies. We are recommending that we increase the amount that was going to go to the 2019 Capital Reserve. We had shown that at $2.3 million, and based on that increase, we're recommending that that amount go up to $4 million. As a reminder, both the money sitting in the 2015 Capital Reserve and the 2019 Capital Reserve is a funding source for the next project that will be approved by the board and ultimately by the community. Once the community approves the use of those funds, that means that whatever is in those reserves, we do not have to borrow those monies. So, it really helps us save money in the long term as we go through the funding for the capital projects. The last component that changes on this slide is the undesignated portion of the fund balance. We had estimated that that would be around $4.1 million, and the actual number will be 3,985, and that is required to be under 4%. Based on these totals, that number is at 3.85% for the end of the year. So, I think it's a good use of the additional monies that we were not expecting, and it's our recommendation that these fund balance levels are the ones that are adopted. The tax levy itself has not changed. That is at 2.34%. The tax rates have slightly been adjusted, and that's based on the finalization of the assessment values from the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. So, in each of the last few years, we have not levied fully at that maximum allowable tax levy amount. In this coming year's budget, we had gone to the Mattel, and again, that was because of the fiscal uncertainty that we knew was coming our way, at least for this year and likely beyond. But based on going lower in the prior years, our five-year average is at 1.6%. So, again, we're still doing our best to keep that as low as possible for the community. So, our final rates, based on these assessed values, are close to what we had predicted in May. There was a slight reduction in the tentative totals from the town of Bethlehem, and what that has caused is about a 5 cent increase in those preliminary rates. So, for Bethlehem, it would be $21.54 per thousand, or a 1.26% increase. Because the assessed values went up about $29 million in the town of Bethlehem, that's why that effective rate increase is lower. There was less of an increase in New Scotland, and that coupled with the change in the equalization rates leads to a higher rate for New Scotland. So, for Bethlehem, it's about a $67 increase over last year's tax rates for a $250,000 home, and similarly for New Scotland, it's 130. And I know the differences in those rates are more confusing for people to understand. What I did do was update the slide that we had used at the May meeting so that you can see, the equalization rates that are released by the state are intended to allow you to fairly apportion the school tax levy when you have different assessment levels in the multiple communities that are usually within a school district boundaries. So, because Bethlehem's EAC rate is at 95 and New Scotland's is at 91, that means you have an adjustment in those assessed values. So, the same identical home in both communities, based on the fact that those assessed values do not neatly align with the market values for the state's analysis, is where you have the need for the EAC rates. Because Bethlehem ends up with the higher EAC rate, they get a lower tax rate, and that would mean that they would be paying about $5,100 in taxes. For New Scotland, because they have the lower EAC rate, they need a higher tax rate in order to levy the same share of taxes between those two communities. So, that's why there are differences, and they are relatively close, again, within about 5 cents of what we had projected as of May. So, going forward into the production of the tax bills, once the board takes action tonight to officially establish the tax rates, we will send this information to Cap Region Bosse's, who will be preparing the tax bills for us. And we are hopeful that they will be delivered to either the escrow companies or to people's mailboxes right around September 1st. Based on where the calendar falls this year, all payments to be made without penalty will need to be either received or postmarked by September 30th. As to payments made in the month of October, based on where October 31st falls, that this is on a Saturday, people will actually have through Monday, November 2nd to pay. It will have to include the 2% penalty, but there is an extra business day because of the way the calendar falls. As a reminder, there are no tax payments that can be made at the school district or at Bethlehem Town Hall. Payments can either be made by mail, which goes to that PO box that's noted on the screen and on the bills. If people want to pay in person because they just want that peace of mind that their, their payment has been made on time, we have made arrangements, again, with Pioneer Bank, the Delmar location and the Glenmont location. They do have both lobby hours and drive-through. Based on the COVID concerns, normally, they would not allow tax payments to be made at the drive-through, but this year, they will be allowing that. The third option for payment is to go online, where, subject to some additional fees, residents can pay either via NACH transfer out of their bank account or by using a debit or credit card. So, we know it's painful and nobody likes to pay their taxes, but we do try to make it as easy as possible. And all of this information is available on our website for people to refer to. And then, once again, this year, we do have a dedicated phone line. So, if anybody has any questions, you know, whether it's a change in their escrow status or they want a copy of the bill, they can call Michelle Curtis, the tax collector, at that number, and we will help guide them through the process. So, that is a rapid overview, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try to respond.
Judy, I have a question for you. It goes back to the, the first slide about the balances.
Yes.
It's more of a frustration, but I just wanted to ask you about it. The state, over the course of the year, is going to be checking in with us quarterly to say how much money they have and how much they can give us, correct? Is that, that their general?
Well, they, they will be assessing that. There were a number of measurement periods. Based on the two periods that have lapsed thus far, they know they're way off from their numbers, so they, based on the budget that was adopted, do have the ability to reduce our aid in the middle of the year. We just don't know what that amount will be. So, yes, I share your frustration.
No, and I get that, but then, I would just, I would hope that, you know, the state would be more understanding in how we use our fund balances, you know, that 4%, you know, it's a number that in normal times makes sense, but if you're going to pull X amount of dollars from us, you know, that, like, because it's, last year, it sounds like, hey, look, we, we had a surplus. Well, if we average it out over the next three years, I don't think we're going to be having surpluses like this. So, is there, has there been any movement from the state or discussion to the state in terms of being a little more lenient in terms of some of these funds that we may or may not be having to use over the next 25 years?
I never lose the opportunity to talk about the importance of considering an increase in the 4%. Every year, when we have our legislative meet and greets with our representatives, we talk about this. It wouldn't cost the state anything, but it would give us some very needed flexibilities because, again, we're a long-term operation and we're trying to take a, you know, multi-year projection approach to make sure that we're covered with our finances, and it really would help us to be able to go higher. So, I will continue to advocate. I know we all do that when we meet with our representatives, but I can't give you a timeline of when that would happen.
No, because I fully understand the need for a cap. You'd never want some school district to be sneaky or deceptive with its money and squirrel away, you know, tens of millions of dollars, but, but in this case, like, this, this is not normal times, you know? And I wish, I hope the state would see, like, boy, we might need to make, due to the extenuating circumstances, we might need to allow districts more leeway so they can use these funding so they can still provide the services that we want to provide.
Yeah. 4% doesn't really get you very far when it comes to the unexpected. So, I'll be shouting from the rooftops if we ever get that, so you'll be the first to know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judy, for your presentation. Next up on our agenda is our recognition of submitted public comment, and we do have a few comments that came in for the meeting today. And I think, to the extent you can, Jody, for the ones that are about some reopening issues, I think it would actually be helpful if you are able to, to provide and answer to the extent that you can. The first comment came in from Alana Gordis. "My family is trying to make a decision regarding our rising VCHS junior regarding remote learning. Our family is leaning toward the fully remote option so that we have more control regarding exactly whom she comes in contact with. However, we are balancing that with other needs. One thing that is important is athletics. She does a fall sport, and being able to participate is really important to her well-being. I know that the two options for fall sports are delayed start of September 24th, or alternatively, having the fall season postponed to spring. I am guessing the postponing is more likely, but from what I have heard, there hasn't been a final decision. My understanding is also that if the kids are fully remote, then they can't participate in school activities, which I assumed would include athletics. The deadline for this decision is August 15th, but it is hard to make the decision without knowing what will happen with fall sports. Do you have any sense of what will happen, or if there is a way to wait until we know the answer before committing to a plan? There is so much to balance. What a stressful time for everyone. Thanks for any information." And then, there is also a comment from, that came in from Michael McCaffrey. "Hello, I am speaking for outdoor sports. I do not see the logic with stay-at-home students not being allowed to play sports due to tracing. If I read the limitations correctly, students who attend class in the building will only be doing that every other day, yet they can play sports. Their contact tracing will be an issue just to a matter of degree with the everyday online students. If you are looking to sincerely have outdoor sports in the safest way possible, one would think the athletes would not be allowed to attend inside the building classes until the season is over and clear proper testing. Any further clarification would be great. Thank you for your time." So, Jody, I didn't know if you could just say a couple of words about the remote and sports and everything that's going on in that area?
Sure. So, we, we do need a commitment by the 15th because we still need to finalize schedules, staff, and transportation. There's a lot of things to do in a very short time period. I think that the reality is, is, you know, flexibility is going to be important for all of us. So, if fall sports were to happen and there were a situation where there were student remote, if we could safely have that student return, we would try to do that. You know, we're not looking to keep kids out of school unnecessarily. In regards to, will sports happen or not? I mean, it's looking more and more like probably not going to happen, judging by what we're seeing at the college level. But I have not heard, there's been no further updates since we had, you know, the, the announcement that they were delayed till the 21st. I, I think there is a lot of conversation about moving sports to later dates with winter and spring, doing shortened seasons. That sounds like it might be more likely, but again, I haven't heard anything more specific related to that. In regards to the waiver in, in not being able to play sports, there is a little bit of confusion. We do ask that if you're committing to a remote option, you can participate in virtual activities that we're offering, but not onsite activities, which, as of right now, are nothing. Everything would be virtual for after-school activities. So, in speaking with our school physician and the Department of Health, the issue with students who are not in it all is that, even though we're talking about alternating days for 7/12, those students have been, we've worked with them on proper health and safety protocols. They've been in our buildings. We're able to, you know, 50% of the time know where they are. When students are not onsite at all, and let's take an example of a high school student on any given day, they might only have two hours of classes or two and a half hours of classes, and the rest of the day, they could be out and about, going here and there. You have no idea where they are, and then they would potentially come onsite and then interact with students who have been in our building. So, there's a lot, even though the alternating day does present some risk, that we have at least done work with students on the appropriate health and safety protocols, and that's less, that's more of a concern with students who are not in our buildings at all. So, that's about all I can say right now is fall sports. I, I would say it doesn't look promising, but again, we haven't heard anything more.
Thank you. The next comment came in from Andy Lee, who writes, "I wanted to clarify why we are choosing the remote-only option for our student this year because although it is the safer option, regardless of school protocols, more attention to amelioration may have swayed us to another choice. First, no mandatory rapid response testing. This limitation means two things. One, symptomatic people can return without a test, and asymptomatic people can and will spread the virus. Is there a way to prevent this without testing? No. Is there a way to moderate these risks? Yes. I don't think testing every person who enters the school is a fiscal possibility, but mandatory testing of every symptomatic individual is possible. Not requiring either a viral test or an antigen test means no one knows who is or has been sick with COVID. Second, the current in-person scheduling maximizes the contact and cross-contamination of students. A better schedule would be to have Group A attend Monday and Tuesday and Group B Thursday and Friday. A better schedule would allow for better cleaning protocols. Wednesday, all students remote learn could be used to allow custodial staff a chance to deep-clean common areas and classrooms. This schedule would also give teaching staff a chance to teach in relative safety to reduce their stress. All this said, I am deeply grateful for all the thought and consideration of our administrative- All this said, I am deeply grateful for all the thought and consideration of our administrative personnel. These are challenges of enormous proportions, and they are, I know, doing the best they can. If the above circumstances change, we would absolutely consider in-person education as a viable option for our family until then, or the gleefully anticipated medical resolution to our Corona problem. Thanks for your service to the V C S D. community." The fourth comment came in from Cindy San Lorenzo, who writes, "Good afternoon. I am in support of schools opening and my kids attending in-school learning, in the hope schools, school remains opened. What is the plan for school to have a backup if a teacher takes a leave of absence because they are sick or quarantining?" Thank you. And, Jody or Dave, I didn't know if you, I know that is a question that I have heard as well, is sort of, what is the plan if a teacher, all of a sudden, needs to be home for 14 days?
So we would look to get a sub for that time, if the teacher was not able to teach. If there's a possibility, the teacher could teach from home, which I think is challenging to do period-by-period teaching at home, but we could work out something with the teacher, so they could teach from home, and we'd have to figure out a supervision piece on school for the students who are onsite. So there's a couple different options for that. You know, no different than if a teacher in the past was out sick for a week or two weeks, we would have to get a sub, so those two scenarios could potentially happen. In regard to the earlier email, just, and, schools are not allowed to test. There's very clear guidance on testing, and what's allowed, what schools are allowed to do versus what health providers or DOH are allowed to do. And we did look at different models of instruction and worked with our school physician on safety, and, you know, his advice was if you're alternating days, whether it be one, two days, if you're doing effective cleaning, regardless, you know, there's, there's no real additional safety risk by having kids in a couple days, in a couple days. And our plan is, you know, and my personal thinking is, we should be cleaning effectively every day and every night, you know. I'm not sure you should be waiting for one day to do a deep cleaning, especially in common areas and highly touched areas, so that is our plan. But I certainly understand people's choice and concerns.
Great, thank you. And the last comment came in from Elisa Schoss, who writes, "There is mention of mask breaks, but what will that look like in the classroom? Will there be building-level uniformity with this process? If children are strategically positioned six feet apart while sitting in the classrooms, will it be possible for them to remove masks? I worry for my kindergartner despite his understanding for the need to wear the mask. Children his age respond to nonverbal communication and refer to that of the teacher for reassurance. I worry that the social-emotional connection would be hindered. Thank you for your time and attention." So I didn't know if there's anything you could, any examples or anything about the mask breaks that are, I know it's a work in progress.
I think that it's probably going to vary depending upon level. Obviously, with five-year-olds, they need a little more direction for mask breaks. I mean, generally, in the classroom, even with social distancing, the recommendation is that masks are on. That's the safest environment. But our teachers, and we are working with the teachers on making sure that students who need a break get breaks periodically, you know, that's part of going outside, taking a break. For older kids, it might just be, if you need a break, step out into the hallway and take your mask off for a minute. So there is no plan that there's, you know, building schedule or classroom schedule mask breaks. I think it's going to vary depending upon the age of the children and what's happening during the day, and what makes the most sense. But I know that our teachers and our principals are very mindful of the fact that everyone will need breaks at times during the day, and do that in a safe manner.
Thank you. That is the last public comment that we received. The next item on our agenda is Item Six, Action Items. A, Finance Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Finance Action Items 1 through 10.
No moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item B, Professional Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Professional Personnel Action Items 1 through 28.
No moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item C, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Support Staff Action Items 1 through 20.
No moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just note, I noticed there are some retirements on here, and I would thank them for their, their service to the district. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, Other Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Action Items 1 through 8.
No moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on policies, where the policies are.
Sure, is there?
Yes.
Killer?
It's Wendy. I had a question on the policy, I believe it is the, it deals with harassment and bullying, maybe discrimination, either, it might be the first one, actually. There's a section where instances of bullying were described, and there was a little section that said this is not meant to be a comprehensive list, and I don't think it's this policy. I think it's the one before that, the sex discrimination one. Yeah, I believe it is this one. Scroll down just a smidgen more. There's a little bit of green, and it's all crossed out.
I think this is the policy with respect to employees.
No, it's a, it's a policy regarding students, and it talks about how somebody might be bullied for their stature, or their appearance, basically an appearance kind of thing.
Do you know if it's in the policy or if it's in the regulation?
I read about 500 of these pages. It might be in the definition. There was a line where it listed several types of bullying or discrimination that might happen, and it's, it was just, it was crossed out that it wasn't meant to be like a full listing, like, that there could be more instances, that it wasn't, you know, every discrimination possible. Why I'm not seeing it. I should have written down which one it was. But I was just wondering where that would fit in. If we, if we took it out, where would it, you know, fall in? Where would, where would the, which policy would cover, you know, kids who are being bullied, basically, you know, for wearing glasses, or having braces, or it's basically, it was really an appearance kind of, it was a reference to appearance. It was with, you know, race, sexual orientation, all of that kind of stuff.
I'm wondering, Brittany, can you maybe scroll up to the top of this one? I think there's a definition of bullying, and, oop, hold on. So it does, it says, "Acts of harassment and bullying shall include, but not be limited to, those acts based on a person's actual or perceived race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, or sex." But because it says, "include, but not be limited to..."
Right. So anything other minor is supposed to be encompassed by that?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, because my question is going to be, how do we make sure that it is included if it was crossed off? I think that that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just, only that I appreciate the, the work that was put into putting together a protocol, especially around DAS violations and investigations. I know we've had a number of discussions over the last couple of years, so I was glad to see the expanded policy.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item Seven, Future Meetings and Events. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 2nd, at 7:00 P. M., anticipating an executive session at 6:00 P. M. And as of right now, we are planning to meet in person at the high school in Room D-122. The meeting after that is on Wednesday, September 16th, at 7:00 P. M., anticipating executive session at 6:00. The meeting following that is on Wednesday, October 7th, starting at 7:00 P. M., with an anticipated executive session at 6:00 o'clock. And the meeting following that is on Wednesday, October 21st, at 7:00 P. M., with an anticipated executive session, starting at 6:00. And those three meetings also, we are currently planning to hold at the high school in Room D-122. I'm not aware of any committee meetings that are scheduled at this point for the Policy Committee, the Facilities Committee, or the Audit Committee, but I'm...
Holly.
Jonathan.
Is, has the, has the governor rescinded, or is now allowing in-person meetings, or can we still do meetings, isolated meetings like that?
My understanding is that the executive order expires the beginning of September, so that's why I'm saying, as of today, because we're not sure what's going to happen with it.
But if it is extended, will we also extend these meetings this way?
We should, you know, we can have a conversation about it. I think, you know, there is a benefit to, to being in person, but, you know, I also recognize that, you know, the Department of Health has recommended that, to the extent possible, meetings and, you know, anything that can be held, not in person, should be held not in person. So I think, you know, it really, in large part, is going to depend on whether we are permitted to do so, because we don't want to be violating the open-meetings law.
It didn't seem like he was going to extend it. I did not get the impression he was extending it again. I think it was, the trajectory is to be in person.
Well, we'll see, we'll see where it goes, but even if he doesn't extend it, we still have the issue of, I don't think D-122 is going to contain the usual group we get, if we're honoring people, or if we have a, a well-attended board meeting. I don't think that room is going to accommodate it with everyone sitting six feet apart, and all the board members sitting six feet apart.
Yeah, I could work with Brittany and Ray to see if D-122 works, or if there's another location that works better for the distancing, and if public, if the public are allowed. I agree, D-122 might not be the best place, although it's beautiful now.
Well, you know, and would love to use it, but we also need to make sure that we're staying safe.
We could use the new auditorium. We can use the new auditorium, Jonathan, with the, lots of room in there, with the HD recording.
I like that idea, Christine.
Yeah. It's the only way we're going to get to use it. It might be the only, I was just going to say, it might be the only use it gets.
Sounds like a plan.
I don't see any need to go back into executive session, so with that, if I can have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
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 Adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.